This is our legislative meeting work session Thursday, September 29th. And at 6 o'clock, I am Mayor Pro Tem Larry Yaki and I'm filling in for our mayor who was out of, Rochelle Robinson, who was out of town at a conference. We already had, in our previous meeting, we had a special call meeting just a few minutes ago, and we had our invocation and our pledge allegiance to the flag. The only announcements and presentations that I have at this point is to make sure your phones are, your cellphones are in the silent mode. And if you'd like to speak this evening, please fill out a form located at the back of the room. And as you walked in, and make sure you fill that out and give it to our city clerk sitting to my right. The first committee that we have is our Public Safety Committee. I am the chairman of that committee, and we have nothing to bring forward tonight. The second committee is Community and Economic Development, and that is chaired by Councilman Mark Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Yaki. Just have one item tonight under Community and Economic Development, and that is to authorize the mayor to sign a sponsorship agreement with Google Incorporated for that company to sponsor the Douglasville Gravity Games to be held on October 22nd, 2016. Who is speaking on behalf of that item? Hello, Ms. Jackson.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council Chelsea Jackson, Operations Coordinator, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. This agreement is with, is between Google, Georgia Tech, and the City of Douglasville. In previous years, we haven't had an agreement, but nothing has changed from previous years. The Gravity Games will still be October 22nd. The city is still listing all of their responsibilities that they usually do, but this is just now in writing, and now we are listed as official cosponsors with Google, Georgia Tech, and with the city. I also have a Google representative here, James Brown, as well as a representative from Jackson Spalding, Carolina Hazard, if you have any other questions regarding the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions?
I don't have a question in regards to this, but Chairman Adams, can we please ask the Google rep to come up? I do have a question.
And while he's doing that, you'll notice on page four, there is a copy of that sponsorship agreement, if you'd like to review it. Evening, sir.
Good afternoon, folks. How are you doing?
Good.
Very good.
What can I do for you?
Get your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, James Brown, 9847 Forest Hill Drive, Douglasville, Georgia.
Hi, Mr. Brown. Thank you so much for all that you do. I'm Google, representing Google and what you do, your contribution to the City of Douglasville and our citizens. I just have a question in regards to the, and you may can answer this and you may not, the pads, are you familiar with the pads that were donated to the city?
Pads?
Yes, the computer pads?
I'm not, no.
Tablets?
Oh, tablets.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have a whole lot to do with how things are distributed to different people that we donate to, but if there's a question, I could certainly bring it back and get the right person to answer.
Sure, if you can go back, the, unfortunately, the pads that were donated, some of them were used at the Alice Hawthorne Center, and we did have someone who wanted to come out and train individuals or teach classes, but because of the software, they weren't able to do that.
Okay.
So there are several pads that are not in use, that are in City Hall. I'm not sure how many, probably maybe over, maybe 70.
Is it a software issue?
I'm not really sure. You can probably speak with our technician, but my question is, the donated pads that are not being used, they were donated to the City of Douglasville. If they're not being used, there are, there is a nonprofit center on the north side that services children at risk. My question is, if those pads are not being used, can the community check them out?
I can't answer for the Community Affairs Team. In my gut, I think it's going to be fine, but let me just talk to the Community Affairs Team. I believe if they were donated to Douglasville, they're Douglasville's property.
Okay.
And as long as they're put to good use, whatever you folks think are best for the people in the community, I'm sure it would be fine, but let me, let me get back and talk to the Community Affairs folks, and I'll get you an answer.
Sure. All right, and our city manager is not here. It's Marsha Hampton. Of course, to my right is our city attorney, Susan Littlefield, but thank you so much for.
No, you're quite welcome. I'm sorry the pads didn't work out. We'll get them to work, and if not, we'll get them to people who can make good use of them.
Well, actually, the pads are working. I mean, the children can get on the internet, but I think the software may not have been updated. I just wanted to really ask the question in regards to other nonprofits that are in the City of Douglasville. The children who are after school could check them out and return them probably after the school is over, but I think we've had some good dialogue, and with you getting back would be great.
I don't think it'll be a problem, but I'll check with the other folks on the committee.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
No other questions, Chairman?
Any other question concerning this item? Glad to hear that we're able to do this once again in October on the 22nd. It's a huge day. I know there's a big day, a lot of things going on, and I'm sure Mr. Greg Roberts would love to tell us all about it, but we're not going to give him the opportunity at the moment. Anything else on this item? If not, that's all that we have under that. I would like to ask that we place that on the consent agenda for Monday night, if possible?
Is that all right with everybody? Okay, very good.
That's all that we have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you.
And the next item is Planning and Development Committee, and that's also your committee?
Thank you, Mr. Yaki. We have two items tonight under Planning and Development Committee. Item 22-16-33 was tabled from September 19th, 2016. I will read it in its entirety, and then we'll ask Mr. Mettler to speak with us about it. Requested variance from the City of Douglasville's Development Code, Appendix B, Section 31003, natural buffer, in an order to reduce the width of a required natural buffer separating the rear yard of a commercial lot and adjacent residential lots from 50 feet to 30 feet at 8847 Hospital Drive, located Land Lot 49, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 13. That application was signed by Mr. Daniel Levy of DK Levy, P L L C. Mr. Mettler, will you come and share with us the most updated information, please?
Michael Mettler, 6695 Church Street. I received an email from Daniel Levy on Tuesday requesting that his application be withdrawn, and at this point, I have done so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I just wanted you to announce that to the full council and to our viewing audience also. Thank you, Mr. Mettler. Having said that, then we will take no action on this item on Monday night since it has been withdrawn. I would like to add one statement, if I could. I hope that this will have caused us to take action to, hopefully, as our, our city, to do a better job in notifying our residents when they have a property that abuts, property that may have a change in zoning where there is a buffer and where they may or may not have depended upon that buffer in making their own decision for, for their livelihood and their home and their homestead. So I hope that we can continue to work on that. Yes, Mr. Siegel?
Have the residents been informed of the withdrawal of the application?
Mr. Mettler, have you, has anyone contacted that citizens' group?
When I sent out a notification to you and the city manager, I also included the president of the.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you doing that, sir.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions concerning that item? Thank you, staff, for all that you've done on that item, and I appreciate any continued work in that area. Item B, adopt resolution enacting a 120-day moratorium on accepting applications for rezonings of certain areas of the city near Thornton Road. This is an ongoing situation, I understand, and I see we have Mr. Chris Pumpfry coming up to speak with us about it, but Mr. Lynn, if you'd like to bring us up to date on it, and then we'll let him come forward.
Yes, sir. I brought the ringer with me here tonight. Jonathan Lynn, Community and Development Services Director, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. This is, we discussed this with council with an update on this moratorium several meetings back. The planning firm that the Development Authority has contracted with to do the planning study for the Thornton Road area, they, their plan is scheduled to be finished sometime late first quarter of the calendar year 2017. So this just kind of extends that moratorium through the end of that planning period, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pumpfry to kind of give more specifics on that.
Mr. Lynn, before, before Mr. Pumpfry comes up, basically, we're following, following the lead of what the county's doing so that our ordinance and our moratorium would be in line with what they're doing, basically. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, and they have already extended theirs.
Thank you, sir. How are you, Mr. Pumpfry?
Great, how are you all?
Good.
Good, good. Chris Pumpfry, Development Authority, Douglas County, 8512 Bowden Street, as Mr. Lynn said. The study is scheduled to complete on March 23rd, and so therefore, as he also mentioned, the county has extended the moratorium to line up with that conclusion date in the hopes are that the city would, would go along the same guidelines. Our goal in that is that both, whatever the recommendations are, could also be adopted, kind of coming up to that sync to the conclusion of the moratorium. As you might understand, there's been a number of folks who, who are interested in developing that area and are eager to see the results of that plan, and so what we, we don't want to do is conclude the plan and then take another six months to try and adopt the recommendations of the plan. So that, that's the goal. We should start to see a lot of the fruits of that starting early January, that we can kind of begin some of those discussions. Just to give you an update on where we are with the study, on Monday of this week, we started holding our stakeholder interviews. We'll conclude those next Thursday morning, and then we will have our first public meeting for all the residents that are residents and property owners within the study and kind of just adjacent to the study area. So that'll be next Thursday, October 6th, at the Hilton Garden Inn, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So that'll be an opportunity for them to kind of hear some of what the planning firm has, has discovered to date, but then really give them the opportunity to provide some input in kind of how folks want to see that area grow and develop, but also putting some balance to it, putting the reality to the existing zonings, the existing property owners who have rights that are, that have certain intentions, but really kind of looking at what are the vacant opportunities that are in the planning area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pumpfry. Any questions? Council, have any questions, Mr. Pumpfry? Thank you very much, Chris. Ms. Littlefield, I did have a question concerning, I believe we had talked at some point when we began to have to do extensions on this moratorium. Are we limited as to how many or for how long?
There's, there's no black letter law that tells you exactly how long you can go. What we're trying to do is to stay roughly within what's been allowed by other courts and lawsuits, but not so far that it goes so long that they've said it's, that's too long. Six months is too long. We know that 90 days is okay. Our guess is that 120 days is probably all right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. Okay, if there is no objection to that, I would like to request also that that be placed on the consent agenda?
It would be, agree, okay? It will be. Just one thing, I just want to let everybody know that I, what I've seen so far on a different subject, the racetrack on Highway 5 is under construction, so they're starting to renovate that facility, and so I just noticed that the other day, or today, as I was coming here.
It'll be a quick turnaround, I understand.
Yes.
I have nothing else under Planning and Development. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next committee is Parks and Recreation, and that's Chairman, that's chaired by Chris Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Yaki. We have one item tonight, Parks and Recreation authorized the mayor to sign an agreement with Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation, Inc., for the purchase of a new triplex greens mower, Toro Green Master 3150-Q, for use at West Pines Golf Course, and I believe Mr. Cartwright's going to give us some information.
Chris Cartwright, golf professional, West Pines Golf Club, 9090 Rose Avenue. So this is a triplex mower, as was mentioned. This is a piece of equipment that during the growing season is used every day. We have three of these mowers, and we'll be replacing a 10-year-old unit with this mower. The Toro unit is the same unit as our other two mowers, so we'll be able to control the parts inventory and make any needed repairs, the same as the other mowers. The mower we're replacing is a John Deere.
But, Mr. Cartwright, what'll happen to the John Deere? Is that going to be sold at auction, or how does that work?
I believe that it could be, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cartwright, are you saying then that the other cutting equipment that we have are all Toro except for this one John Deere?
Correct.
So we're trying to standardize what we're doing as far as the brand and model and so forth?
Correct. It's easier on the mechanic and for the service, as well as ordering parts for the units.
Sure, I understand. Thank you, that's all I had. Mr. Cartwright, the process that y'all went through to arrive at this particular one and the company and everything, explain that process, if you want.
So this is a unit that Chuck, our superintendent, is very familiar with. He's used it in the, uses it presently in the past, and it's a contractor that we purchased most of our equipment from at a state contracted price. So it's already set at the minimum.
Okay, so, I mean, there's no bid process on stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I'm not sure if we should put this on the consent agenda because of the amount. Either way, no? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cartwright, and we'll vote on that Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Watts. I am chairman of the Finance Committee, and we do not have anything tonight to bring forward. Our next committee is Information Technology, and that is Councilman Richard Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We have one item, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with ProxyClick SPRL for Secure Electronic Visitor Management Services for City Hall.
Yes, Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. Yes, this is an electronic sign-in system, and the city manager identified a need for an electronic sign-in system. One day, we had one person come in for an interview, and they actually saw who was interviewing prior to them, and they happened to know that person. So she asked me to research some electronic sign-in systems. She had experienced one down at the GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, and she said it was, it seemed really nifty. So we researched it. It is our informal practice or agreed-upon procedures that we try to seek three quotes. We looked for, we did find three quotes. We queried those off the internet. We looked at i Lobby is one, the Receptionist is the second one, and ProxyClick was the third one. They all were in the ballpark of the same price, about $100 a month for the service plus startup equipment. The first two that we looked at, trying to get them through Susan, and they didn't make the cut. So the third one, we did. She, we did have to make some changes, go back and forth with ProxyClick, but they, she was, she ended up being satisfied, and she can speak to that if you have any other comments, Susan.
There, there are just not very many of these companies, apparently, and the ones that we've been looking at are all far away. One of the contracts I reviewed was a Canadian company wanting to be paid in Canadian currency. And Georgia's a little bit different with its local governments in that we can't sign those contracts with those indemnity clauses in them because they're against Georgia law. So this, this is one we found that has accommodated someone in Georgia, and, and they're about to give you a contract that is not illegal.
Yes, this is, this is the one that GMA uses, ProxyClick.
And so how does it actually work now?
Well, so there are, the features are, there are convenience features and there are security features. The convenience features are, staff can send messages back and forth to the visitors via text that lets them know, hey, I'll be on my way. There is some confidentiality because we're not using the old manual log that's up front. You can't see who all is in front of you in the queue, or who's waiting to be seen by who. Staff can pre-register the visitor, so if I am expecting someone to come in, I can go ahead and pre-register those, those people. There is a self-check-in and self-checkout. So sometimes when the receptionist is on the phone, she has to say, hold on a minute, you know, well, let, tell the person to sign in, so we can avoid, we'll be able to avoid that process. For the security features, there is going to be more accountability with the visitors who check in and who check out. So because it's electronic, they can move up to a kiosk. If there is an emergency, we'll be able to text out to the visitors what's going on, where to go, what to do, that type of thing, if there was a fire or, or something of that nature. Pictures will be taken with an iPad when visitors come in, so you also have a photograph of who they are, and will always have access to the current list of visitors. The startup cost, we'll have to buy an iPad, a printer, a kiosk stand, and some labels, and the annual cost is $1,200. So the first year cost will be $2,224, but after that, depending on how long the iPad lasts and the equipment lasts, it should only be about $1,200 a year. So James helped me out with some of the research, and James, do you have anything you'd like to say or explain more of how it would work?
Councilman, good evening. She's correct on the cost. The startup cost has gone run around about $965 for the hardware, which is the iPad, printer, four consumable rolls of printing labels, and this kiosk itself. And so after the first year, the only expenditure we have is purchasing labels for the printer. And that's $15 a roll for a 100-foot roll, and it's depending how we use it, because the labels are cut according to the size that we make it on there. So with, not, any of these labels, we can make them larger, so the consumables go faster, or shorter, keep them going longer. Initial costs, hardware costs, as I said, at right about $1,000 for the first year. That's it.
Question, Mr. Siegel? James, are you, so basically, if you have on a printed label, it will be something that the city will identify, I'm assuming with its seal or something on it, to show that you have actually been logged into the system and you are a welcome visitor? Is that correct?
Yes, we could, that's correct. We could customize the labels.
Right, okay. And so that's the way you would identify that person as being someone that should be here? Okay. Was this actually more for security purposes, as far as knowing who was in the building?
No, it was not, did not start out for security purposes, but as we started digging into it and learning about it, then we thought, hey, this is a really good idea.
Listen, I mean, the, the pad is right there, and you're looking at everybody else that's signed in, so you're seeing who's in the building or who has been in the building. So it is a little bit of, you know, a security issue, so that's.
Gary could get a report anytime about who came in and what their picture looked like, so.
So the badge, the printout will have a picture of?
Right, James?
That's correct.
Well, it actually has their picture on the, on the sticker? Is it a sticker?
I'm not sure about the putting on a sticker at this point, but the iPad will have a picture of them, so we associate them with their file that they keyed in.
Okay. And it's a sticker that, is it a sticker, or is it, it's going to have to go into something?
It's a sticker, but we can go the other route and have a regular paper with a plastic holder, but that's extra cost. So that's why we chose to go with a use of stickers.
I think a sticker's just fine. Yeah, sounds good. Very good.
Also, Ms. Chairman?
I'm the chairman.
He's right next to you.
Most of the school system has, has that type of system, and where you, you know, login, then when you leave your log out, and it logs everything, and then they give you a sticker.
And has that at their school, too? Yep.
Have a little camera above the screen, and you gotta move to try to get yourself on there. Go to the state offices in the sloppy Floyd, Floyd Building downtown. They've got a similar thing as well, although they're usually printed messed up. We're not going to have that issue.
Good.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Now, will the receptionists up front actually man or take care of that?
They'll be coordinating everything, yes, she will.
All right. Other questions? Thank you, Chair.
And if there's no objections, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday.
Okay.
No other items, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, thank you very much. Maintenance and Sanitation Committee, and that is chaired by our, our friend Mike Miller, and in tonight's absence, Mark, would you handle that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Yaki. We do not have any business under that, that item tonight. Just want to continue to remember Mike and his continued recovery.
Same here. Our next item is Transportation Committee, and that's LaShawn Breidanley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Yaki. Just one item, approve the Welcome Center TE Grant Project Fountain Replacement Option Number Two to be constructed within the existing budget for the TE Grant Welcome Center and Streetscaping Project located on O'Neill Plaza, Project CSTEE-0010100728, PI number 0010728.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Michelle Wright, Planning Director, 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. In our previous meetings, we had been taking a look at the fountain for the Welcome Center at the plaza that we are redoing, and we brought back to you three options, and I got with the committee chair, and we are recommending option number two. And option number two, you do have a picture of it in there, in, in the computer, and option number two is a cast-and-place pool surround and basin with a nozzle cascade centerpiece array with underwater lights. The original budget for the Welcome Center TE Grant for the fountain was $43,725. And what I'm bringing you tonight is what the options are and what the costs are. If we go with option, what I call Option 2A, to do the fountain, the, to do it completely as we see it, the cost is $50,525, which is $6,800 over budget. That fountain would have nine center geysers, 15 ring geysers. The ring geysers are the smaller ones on the bottom, three pumps, lighting, and a smart controller. We have another option for you to look at, which is Option 2B, which would be $41,125, which is $2,600 under budget. However, that fountain would have the nine geysers. It would not have the, the 16-ring geysers, which is lower level, and it would, it would have the lighting and two pumps. When you don't have the lower-level geysers, the ring geysers, you can take off an additional pump. If you do have them, it does require that additional pump, and it would also have the lighting. We would also have to take off the smart controller. The smart controller cost is approximately $3,200, and the outer ring geysers and pump would be $6,200 if you wanted to add any of them back in separately. Since Option 2B is $2,600 under budget, if you were to add back in the smart controller, you would be only $600 over budget. The smart controller turns the fountain on and off, it keeps up with the water levels, has a time clock and light timer, and so that's what I'm bringing to you to take a look at.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Do we have any questions?
I mean, I really liked 2A.
I know.
I think that, is there any way that we can work that into the budget?
Maybe we should talk about the budget. I gave you a sheet of paper there that you can look at, the Welcome Center TE Grant, okay? The budget from GDOT was $600,000. The city added $16,000, which gave us a total of $616,000. The bid came in at $769,934.30, which was our lowest bidder, and I believe that was the second time we bid it out, and then we did make some cuts on the second time. We did do a change order for $106,726.50. It's already gone through GDOT and been approved. So we are now over budget, $47,208.30. We met today, the engineer and the contractor, and we came up with an additional change order that we feel that we can do for approximately $53,000, which is more than what we are over budget. However, I do want to say that if we're in the project and during the project, this does not account for any change orders or unexpected items that may come up under this. We are now going to go back and tweak the additional change order for $53,000 and look into it to make sure that we've got our numbers correct and what we can do. and what we can do during that time period. If we do, then what we will do is submit that change order to GDOT, the Georgia Department of Transportation, for them to take a look at it, and hopefully, it would be accepted. That would leave some money in the budget. However, if our num, our numbers are not exact right now, if our numbers are not exact, then, well, then.
2A would be?
Yeah, you're talking about $6,800, and here, we're talking about, about $3,000 still.
Over.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Madam Chairperson? Yes. Ms. Wright, just for clarity purposes, most of the time when I hear change order, I hear, I'm accustomed to seeing an increase in cost.
That's correct.
So, your description of the change order that you discussed from the conversation with the engineers and contractor today was a negative $53,000.
It was a negative. However, when we submit it to GDOT, they require as, whether it's positive or negative, they require you to submit a change order. So, that is a negative.
Okay. Can you give me just a general overview of what that, what you would be deducting from the project in order to save $53,000?
What we're looking at is some of the walls, and lowering some of the walls where, and some of the, the grading and areas for those walls. We actually have a preliminary plan, but I, that we discussed this afternoon. And that's basically what we're looking at.
I'm not meaning to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure that in our attempts at value engineering the project in order to save money and come in under budget, we don't forego the purpose of doing the project to begin with, and that was to alleviate a lot of those drainage problems that we have in and around the plaza and the adjoining buildings. Just want to make sure that in, in looking at this and trying to, trying to value engineer it, we don't value engineer the main thing out of it. That, that's all.
The drainage system is still in place, the central drainage system.
That was my main concern. Thank you very much, Ms. Wright. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Did that answer your questions? All right. And Mayor Protam Yaki, unfortunately, 2A would be very expensive over our budget. Did she explain that to you?
Yeah, it seems like we could find $6,800 somewhere.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman?
I have a question. I don't know if we'd ever discussed this. Maintaining that, that fountain, and who's gonna maintain it and clean it and get the scum out? And where are all the knickers and dimes gonna go to once we collect the dam about six months?
I'm sorry, what was the last question?
I said, who's gonna maintain it and clean the fountain? Keep the water in the warranty on the fountain? And where's all the, that spare change going once we collect it?
I'm not familiar with the spare change, because I, I'm not sure if we had it in our other fountain. Maybe we did, but the, in the past, the plaza and the fountain has been maintained by the Maintenance and Sanitation Department.
So, I'm sorry. Councilman Segal, did you have a question?
Does Mr. Roberts know what they might do with those coins they find in the fountain?
No comment.
Ms. Wright, so on Monday, on Monday, you should be able to, you said there was about $1,600 over after the decrease in the change order, correct?
Are you, you're talking about Option 2B?
Yes.
It was $2,600 under budget. If you were to add the smart controller, for $3,200, you would be $600 over budget. It has been recommended to me that the smart controller, if you don't have the smart controller, then a person has to go out there and turn the lights on, or check the water levels, and that type of thing. And possibly, that could be taken up in the budget when we do that change order, the, the, for $53,000.
So, between now and, and Monday, at our next meeting, you'll have enough time, I'm sure, to go and see if you can critique and see if that $600 can be recouped from somewhere else?
Well, if we do it, we were hoping to take it out of the existing budget with the, the change order being more than the negative $47,000. It was, the change order we were gonna try to do is 53.
Okay. And does everyone understand what, what she's explained? Okay, great.
Do we get a vote on which one?
Not tonight.
On Monday, do we get a vote on which one we want?
As Chair, we have been talking, we've been discussing this fountain for a very long time. We definitely want to make sure that we stay within budget as close as possible. So, to answer your question.
Madam Chair, may I ask my, my suggestion then?
Yes, absolutely.
Could we possibly then know, Ms. Wright, the certainty of that $53,000 potential savings before we vote on which fountain?
I'm not sure, that we just met today, that we would need more time, but.
Would it be?
Because what we're looking at is the engineering of it, and, and what exactly we're gonna do, and what we came up, we have preliminary cost and figures. I did meet with the contractor and the engineer and the consultant this afternoon.
Well, I assume then that that's a maybe, so we, we don't know until more time has gone by and until you have had more conversation with those two groups to see if that $53,000 savings is doable. Is that what you're saying?
Well, the fountain probably isn't gonna be put in for a while, and it is just a little electronic piece of equipment. Possibly, if you're interested in it, and we take a look at it, maybe, maybe you want to look at something like adding that later, if, if you're unsure.
I, for one, would be, I feel like the fountain would be much more, have much more of an effect if it were basically, if it were shown as it is on, on the picture that we have. And so, for a difference of $6,800, to, to basically take away 16 spouts around the outside, you're gonna do away with a large portion of that effect, in my opinion. So, if we can vote on which one we would like to have, contingent upon savings, potential savings in another area, and maybe go forward from that standpoint, I would, I would be in favor of going to Option 2A. But if these, if it's a pipe dream to save $53,000, then I would not. I'd just like to hear more detail, like to hear more information as to where we are in budget at a later time before we actually pay for Option 2A. That's all I had.
I like that idea.
Ms. Wright, in a timeline, realistically, what does that look like?
As far as what?
As far as getting back and, getting back with the consultants that you've spoken with.
If you want a more definite answer, you'd probably need an additional couple of weeks.
And we would still be within enough time, since the fountain is not going to be put in. But are we meeting deadlines with, with GDOT?
Yes, we are. We will have to resubmit this, but since we're gonna be making a change order anyways, if we reduce the height and some of the walls, then we're gonna have to resubmit to GDOT anyways, and we could do them both together.
And you'll have to do that anyway? Okay. All right. Thank you for your suggestion, so we'll do just that.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mayor Protam, to answer your question, it's a possibility.
Thank you.
All right, no other items under Transportation?
Okay, thank you very much. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's also chaired by Mike Miller, and tonight, it's gonna be Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We have no items under Personnel and Organization at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Ordnance and Intergovernmental Committee, LaShawn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam Yaki. Just one item, adopt and ordinate to amend Section 2-47 of the Administration Ordinance to Clarify Motions to Table and Voting Procedures for Appointment of Appointed Officials and to amend Section 2-49 to Clarify Matter Concerning Majority Voting and Recording of Votes and Authorize the City Attorney's Office to Advertise Notice that the Mayor and Council will consider amending the City Charter to authorize electronic voting. And I will, we will have comments from our city attorney, Ms. Littlefield.
Madam Chairman, after our discussion in committee, I know that I need to add a clause to that so that you can consider having me advertise to change the charter with regard to appointment of the Mayor Protam and the mayor's powers of, of voting or not on that. In order to accomplish all four of those things, I'm gonna propose that we, we take the city code matters, which are the first two, for an item by themselves, and the remaining two for the charter as a separate item, since they're gonna have different effective dates anyway. We'll, we'll bring you that on, on Monday.
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Littlefield, for being very specific and detailed in our committee meeting earlier. Do we have any questions or comments from Mayor Protam or council members?
Just want to make sure it's clear to the viewing audience that the proposed changes to the charter are very minor. They don't even have to go to the state legislature. It's not changing form of government or anything like that. It's actually improving our processes, streamlining.
That is correct. To a large extent, we're conforming to charter changes made earlier.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Attorney Littlefield. Thank you for your comments. Councilman Segal, no other items under ordinances and intergovernmental committee. Mayor Protam Yaki.
Thank you very much. Education and Training Committee, Councilman Sam Davis. Thank you very much, Sam. Okay, other business, any other business to be brought before this council?
Just a note, Mayor Protam, Ms. Littlefield, did you have something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to remind everyone, as Mr. Roberts has mentioned, and as we've also spoken tonight about everything that's going on on the 22nd, there are, there are a couple of booths still available, I understand, for cooking, as far as chili. Chili cook-off on the 22nd, my challenge still stands.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. City Attorney, Joel Dodson is not here tonight. Are you gonna fill in for him?
Yes, sir, among others.
Among others.
No business for the city attorneys tonight, thank you.
Okay. And for yourself, City, Chief Assistant City Attorney?
None for me.
Okay. Chief of Police, Gary Sparks?
No business, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. And the replacement for our city manager for tonight?
Ms. Hamid did not leave me any comments for you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, this is the point where we have comments from our citizens and delegates, if there's anyone that would like to come forward. If, if not, would you like to come forward, ma'am?
Could you please come forward and tell us about the events Friday and Saturday?
You can do it afterwards. Come out, come forward.
If you didn't say it, then I was gonna have to, and I'd much, you'd do a much better job than I would.
I just showed up, waited for y'all to say something, and I came prepared, I hope, so.
Just your name and your address for the record.
Grede Carter, 6230 Hedgestone Way, Douglasville.
Okay, thank you.
We are very excited about this weekend's event. Tomorrow night is our Second Annual Art Walk in downtown Douglasville, and on Saturday is our Second Annual Music and Arts on the Plaza All-Day Festival. And we, and we're not supposed to pass out things, but I did bring our programs, if anybody interested in taking a look at it for our events this weekend. And the reception for the art walk is at Tuya's, the frame shop downtown. And we're very excited because it also coordinates with Hot Rods on Main. So, there'll be a lot of people downtown this weekend. So, I think it's gonna be a fun event, and the weather's gonna be great. So, we look forward to that, and I want to invite y'all to all come and be there and have a good time in our wonderful downtown Douglasville, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What are the times for both events, Saturday?
All right, Friday night, September 30th, which is tomorrow night. The art walk is from 6:00 to 9:00, and it mostly goes all the way down Broad Street. The Courthouse Museum will be open, and there'll be also artists on the lawn. And then, businesses throughout Broad Street will have artwork in their windows displayed. And then Saturday is, of course, October 1st, and the time is from 10:00 to 6:00. Music all day, art activities. We have live painting, demos, kids, artist market, food, and the music is all genres. And it's a family-friendly, free event for people to come out and, and enjoy our creative community, so.
Very good.
That's all I've got.
Give that to our city clerk, and she'll get, make sure that we get a copy of that, what you have.
Or you could stick around until afterward, adjourned.
And stick around, too?
I could do that, too. So, but thank you for letting me share that, and I'll fill out my piece of paperwork.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
It reminded me of one other thing. One of our downtown eateries has opened up their patio on Plaza East. That's Cabin Fever Roasters. So, if anyone wants, it's in a cooler now, sit out there on their patio and.
Absolutely.
Go yourself.
Yeah, very good.
We had dinner with them last evening, and they were telling us that they planned that to begin this weekend.
They actually posted on Facebook that they've got it open today, even though they'd planned for Saturday.
Sounds good. Mr. Roberts, would you like to come forward and tell us what's gonna happen Saturday and all of next week?
Just a reminder to the citizens of Douglasville that starting tomorrow, Friday, September 30th, is our annual, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, this weekend, is our annual fall yard sale amnesty weekend. So, take those items that you want to sell, put them out, get them sold. And what doesn't sell, leave it out, and we'll pick up what's left. We do, that has worked for us for a number of years and works well for us. On Saturday, at the First Presbyterian Church on Campbellton Street, just north of Interstate 20 Bridge, there will be an electronics recycling event, and I believe that's 10:00 to 2:00. And you could email us at sanitation@douglasvillega.gov, or call us at 7709-203,005, to get additional information, should you see this in time. And then, starting Monday, October 3rd, on every resident's normal scheduled pickup day, is our annual fall cleanup. If I said spring at any point in time here, I meant fall, and, but I don't think I did, but I could have. But our annual fall cleanup starts on Monday, October 3rd. So, if your normal pickup day is on Monday, your pickup day will be Monday. If you're on Wednesday, your day will be on Wednesday, and so forth. Sometimes we do, with some of the bulky pickup, like with couches and mattresses and things, we might run a day late on you, so don't, don't panic. We'll come back the next day and get it. So, sometimes it takes us through Friday to get it all up. But make sure you have everything out by 7:00 AM on your normal pickup day.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else, staff reports? I guess not. Then, if there's nothing else to be brought forward, we're adjourned.